Trying to flow them with the...
All right, we're going to call to order the June 6th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council, Redevelopment Successor Agency and Financing Authority. We're going to begin tonight, as we do each week, with the Pledge of Allegiance. We'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the Pledge of Allegiance, which tonight is going to be led by Mr. Bill Panos.
Hi, I'm the United States of America. I'll make the floor to stand.
The council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our real property negotiator regarding West Capitol Avenue north of Tower Bridge Gateway between Third and Fifth Street. No action was taken to confer with our legal counsel regarding approval to initiate or intervene in an action. No action was taken in that regard. And finally, the council this evening took action under Public Employment Evaluation to appoint a new city manager for the city of Sacramento. And so I'm pleased on behalf of the city council to formally announce that we have unanimously appointed Mr. Martin Tuttle, or Marty Tuttle, as the new city manager for the city of West Sacramento, replacing our esteemed city manager Toby Ross, who I think is well-known as retiring next month. Marty's management leadership for our region and the 23 cities and six counties of the region as Executive Director of SECOG won a broad national recognition and acclaim. He spearheaded the groundbreaking Sacramento blueprint process, which became the national and statewide model for sustainable land use and transportation. He's worked in the private sector at the URS Corporation and at New Phase Development before becoming the Deputy Director for the California Department of Transportation, Caltrans, known affectionately as Caltrans. And at Caltrans, he oversees the allocation of $1.5 billion in federal stimulus funds to over 600 local transportation agencies. Before joining SECOG, Marty had served as the District Director for this Assembly District and has a long history of working to make West Sacramento better. And he also served as the Chief Administrative Officer for County Transportation Agency. We're pleased to announce the appointment. Marty Tuttle aims high and gets the job done, which makes him a perfect fit for the city of West Sacramento and our ambitious vision. And recruiting a manager of his caliber means that West Sacramento is not going to miss a beat when it comes to the waterfront, the neighborhoods, the port, flood protection, economic development, good, solid, prudent budgeting, and our other many priorities. And so we welcome Marty Tuttle aboard as our new city manager. Marty, welcome. All right, with that, we're going to move to Item 1B, which is Council Communications. And let me just, if I can just make one other comment. We had a broad, a broad array of highly qualified candidates compete to be the city manager of West Sacramento. And I think it's a good testament to the community, to the residents of the city that make this a great place to work and to lead and to do business, and to the tremendous staff of this organization. And particularly, I want to acknowledge, not by name, but a couple of our senior managers who, and executives, who we are extraordinarily proud of and grateful that they are, that they and their colleagues are part of our team. So it was a very affirming process around the quality and caliber of the people who work for and lead the city of West Sacramento. And Marty's fortunate to be able to join that team. But we are, just on behalf of the council, want to say how, how proud and grateful that we are that, that we have folks of this caliber and this level of commitment and dedication and true love and devotion for the community of West Sacramento. Right, Item 1B is Council Communications. Are there reports or are there, pardon me? Oh, I'm sorry, 1A comes before 1B. Item 1A is presentations on, by the public on matters not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the city council. And this is an opportunity for a public forum on matters that are within our jurisdiction. Just a reminder that under state law, we're not allowed to take action or have a comprehensive discussion of any items that are brought up under Item 1A, but it is a key opportunity for public forum. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other items tonight to please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available at the door and turn it into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone gets the chance to be heard. And to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. We take the yellow cards up to the point where this staff report is completed. Once the staff person at this table or the podium stops talking and the council questions begin or public comment begins, then we don't take any additional cards. If you think you might want to talk about an item that's on the agenda this evening, be sure to get your card in before the conclusion of the staff report on that item. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart, and that flip chart simply indicates which item on the agenda the council is currently considering. We do recognize that for some folks, speaking in public can cause some anxiety and so we, and discomfort. So we do ask that there not be any boos or cat calls or even applause or other demonstrations that we try to maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. So with that, we have actually quite a few requests to speak under Item 1A this evening. And the first is by Mr. Bill Lowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, William Lowell, West Sacramento, for the record. And as I stated previously at other meetings, we continue to have late-running local Yolo buses. And it's been even harder on those of us that take number 35, which goes once every hour like the rest, but that's pretty much the only bus that goes from this area to the south part of town. And so maybe, maybe we can do something to address that with the buses that arrive late to connect with 35. And again, with the downtown in the evening, I know there's at least two of those number 45 buses that go straight to Woodland. I think they should be relocated for West Sacramento, Davis, and Woodland since virtually all of the 42s are crowded, standing room only throughout the day. And I don't think any improvement has been made since we got our branch of the Junior College in there across the street. And that takes up quite a few of the seats. And tomorrow at Regional Transit, we're going to have a workshop from 2:30 to 4:30 regarding the final drafts of the service starting in September. And it looks, looks like they're going to reduce the service to Kaiser on Morse Avenue. And some of their logic doesn't make sense to me, but I'm going to be sure to make, to get my point across to them as to why. And lastly, when I was coming over here this afternoon, I was on 40 or 41 bus and we made the right turn onto Third Street. And we got up to G Street, and there was some signage on the right that told us to turn right for one thing, and then it told us to go to the next block on F Street to do something, something similar. And I thought to myself, well, that section of F Street has been renamed to Waterfront Place. Therefore, I suggest we have that little blue sign at Third and G updated to read Waterfront Place. Thank you.
Mr. Lowell. Next is Misty Drew.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. My name's Misty Drew, and I'm here on behalf of the Yolo County Progressive LULAC Council. We started a new council in West Sacramento. And as a council, kind of like our first, our first working with the public has been the boxing clinic. And I'm here also with Felicity, and she's here with her parents. This puts a name on, or a face towards our boxing clinic. She has a disability, and for her to, even though she has a disability, she still has the heart and the desire to, to box. And we have our world champion trainers that are going to be working with her along with other kids in our city. As a LULAC council, we're here to, you know, to help the kids. We want to do a lot of work with, with youth outreach. And with that said, we have a fundraiser that's going to be coming up. It's going to be on June 30th at Vegas Night Club in Old Sacramento. We wanted to invite the city out because they are donating the cover charge to the boxing clinic. We've already done a few fundraisers and raised some money to help with scholarships for kids so that the kids can be, you know, so any kid who's involved has the opportunity to participate in this wonderful program. Also with the fundraiser that's going to be happening on the 30th, we have some of our Hall of Fame boxers that are actually some of the trainers in our clinic. Tony the Tiger Lopez, Trino, Mr. K O Sivala, and Loretto Garza is going to be making an appearance that night to help bring in the crowd. So we just wanted to introduce ourselves to you and look for your support with our council and with the boxing clinic. Thank you.
And, excuse me, Louie and Julian going to talk with you while you're all up to? You guys talking about something totally different? Oh, okay. Sure, why don't you come, why?
Mayor Cabaldin, city council members. My name is Julian Perez, and I am District Director for LULAC District 16. Our district is comprised of three LULAC councils. We have the Yolo County Progressive Council here in, in Yolo County. We also have the Lodi Elizabeth Rose Orozco Council. And we also have the Cruz Reynoso Council in Sacramento. Our organization, LULAC, which stands for the League of United Latin American Citizens, was first organized in 1929 in Texas. It was originally organized as a civil rights organization to advocate for the civil rights of Latino residents in Texas. Since that time, our organization also engages in educational trainings, and we also participate in worthwhile civic activities. As Misty mentioned, we're going to have a boxing camp for the youth here in Yolo County, and we're asking for your support. We are co-sponsoring the event. We have already had two fundraisers to raise funds for scholarships for the youth that are unable to pay for all or part of their fees. And again, we are very proud to be co-sponsors of this event, and we look forward to participating in more events of this type in West Sacramento, the communities of Broderick, Bright, and all of Yolo County. Thank you.
Campos. Good evening. My name is Louis Campos, and the individual that started all this trouble last year. And I was very fortunate to have a lot of good support from the city. In particular, I'd like to thank Bob Johnston for the incredible support that he's given this particular program, as well as his staff. And Mark Johansson has also been a very key member of our boxing clinic. And I understand Mark had been quite a, I think, martial arts expert at one time himself. And so we've learned quite a bit from him, as a matter of fact.
He's very good, so feel free to punch as much as, as hard as you want.
So we want to see if we can maybe, yeah, get him to throw a few blows. But given that, I, this, this year, we're having another event. Now, you guys are very fortunate that we don't have the 50 kids that were going to come here tonight, because they were all charged up to come here, and I didn't want to start boxing here in the aisles or anything like that, so they're at home. But I, this year, we are looking forward to having a fantastic, fantastic summer camp with the kids, and they're from all over the city. In particular, we would, we're focusing on kids from Brighton, Broderick, and other parts of the city as well. And the summer camp is going to be held in, at the REC Center. And again, you know, Bob Johnson has been very good about getting all the details, details squared away. And we certainly are feeling that this year, we're going to have an event that we want to invite all the city. We want to invite all you folks to attend and see these kids in action. There's no contact, but we have extraordinary boxers that will be there donating their time. Guys like Trino Sivala, Tony the Tiger Lopez, Loretto Garza, all world champions. And these individuals are very much concerned about what's going on in West Sacramento, very much concerned in terms of some of the issues with youth. And so they strongly feel that we need to have direction with these kids and follow-up in terms of providing these kinds of services and training to individual kids that want to do this. So I ask your support and continue to get your support. I also want to thank the Police Department for their support. Last year, we had Tony Herrera and Officer Wilson be part of the trainers. They couldn't compete with the kids. They couldn't compete with the girls that were there. We had eight girls that were just as sharp, and even the boys said, we can't compete with them either. So this young lady here is going to be one of our top boxers, and we are going to really work with her because I think she really wants to get involved and engage in the boxing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is Conrad also a part of this? Are you part of this? Okay. Oh, different, something different, okay. Well, before we, before we move on, just, boxing has a, boxing has a rich history in this community. And so I know the whole council's, in addition to Mr. Johansson, who may want to say a word, but I'm thrilled that...
I work with, I work with Ennio Rodriguez in the Bright Gym.
Yeah, we're thrilled that this is happening. And I just want, you know, personally, I want to say to the, you know, a lot of folks who are involved in the, in the, in the Yolo Progressive wing of LULAC, and we'd all, we've had collaborations and disagreements, and we can have them at the same time because we're in the same family. And I, I think we appreciate continuing, you know, we can, we can, we can argue here and work together and collaborate here, and all to the good, and trying to tackle exactly the issues that you talked about, Louie and Misty, around the needs of our youth in every dimension. And so thank you very much for, for doing the hard work and the leadership and the innovating and the part, and the partnering to make, make this a reality. I think it's going to be a tremendous, tremendous benefit to the community. Mark, did you want to say a word?
Just a couple of comments. I had the opportunity to go to one of the camps last year. And really, boxing does have a history in West Sacramento, and, you know, our kids in particular need something to do. And this is really a very constructive outlet. It's not, it's not about violence, it's about discipline, it's about exercise, it's about camaraderie. So if anybody in the community does have an opportunity to go check out the boxing camp, even to observe, to watch these kids out there, it's really enlightening. It's, it's, it's really a great event. I think it really brings back history to West Sacramento.
Ennio Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to thank you guys for coming out. This is a great collaborative opportunity to not let the history of boxing in West Sacramento slip away. If you haven't had a chance to go out and take a look at the Wall of, the Wall of Fame at the REC Center, it really depicts the tremendous, the tremendous professional history that we have here in West Sacramento with, with boxing. And I can tell you that my nose isn't crooked because I fell off my bike. It was because I had to carry around my boxing gloves with me on my bike growing up in Broderick, because that's what kids did, that's, we were boxing all the time. And I had the privilege of actually growing up with a lot of the guys that actually went up and became professional fighters. And I had no idea what I was doing, getting in the gym with a lot of these guys, but, but it turned out to be okay. And so thank you very much for, for carrying on that torch continually to make sure we don't lose that history.
Yeah, I too would just like to chime in just very briefly. I grew up in Bright, and so, matter of fact, right across the street from me, Trino used to live there part-time, I'd say. And his real good buddy was Archie Shanks. And Archie was a red-headed boxer that, I tell you, he'd come out of that ring beaten and battered, but he'd give it 100 percent. He, he's quite a guy. And anyway, I'd just like to also chime in and say that, you know, if there's any way that the community can see fit to go out and, and see what's going on out there. And it's like they say, it's not combat, but at the same time, it's, it's a lot of exercise. And if anybody's ever sparred for just a few rounds, you know it's a lot of exercise. And so it's, it's very, very worthwhile. It's good, and it's good for the kids. It builds character, and it's really good for them. Thank you.
Mr. Ledesma. Thank you all this brief. Thank, I just want to say thank you for all the work you're doing and for organizing the fundraisers and putting on the camp. And certainly, we want to help get the word out. So if you could, if there's an emailable flyer or something you have, you can find, find it to our staff and to get it to us, and we can make it out great. So I just want to make sure you could have that avenue.
Well, and for the 3 million people that are watching this broadcast right now, is, I don't know if there's a website, if you, if you Google Legends of Boxing, West Sacramento, will you get to the basic information about the fundraiser and the camp? Or if they're, oh, they're, okay, so you can find Legends of Boxing on, West Sacramento on Facebook? Okay. Terrific. All right, Mr. Miranda.
I appreciate everything you guys said, but you got to follow through. My wife and I walk along the riverbank and in, in the Bright Park area, along the walkway up there. I see many star thistles growing there. I think I saw five. That's not many. But if you know star thistle, in within five years, there'll be 5,550,000, a million of those plants. And nobody can walk through that area. So I'm asking permission, and I know you don't make opinions at this moment, but if you wait, the star thistle is going to take over this city. You think I'm joking? I'm not. There was a piece in the paper about a young man, about 11, 12 years old, who was on one of the levee systems in southwest Sacramento. His dad ran the, that, that area, and he asked for volunteers to eradicate the star thistle. I thought the star thistle was from England. It's from Colombia. I also learned that star thistle has a six-foot root, and it starves all the other plants in the area. So the longer you wait to eradicate that plant, the better chance it has to survive. Thank you.
All right, thanks. We can't, as I indicated, we wouldn't take that up now, but I could see our Director of Public Works in the back row, who is, who has responsibility for all of that, taking some quick, some quick notes to get, to get some follow-up. And we have your contact information as well to follow up, so thank you. All right, those are all the requests we have under Item 1A. Thanks again to the, to the, to the Legends of Boxing Camp team, and we're going to move to Item 1B now, which is Council Communications. Are there reports or the communications this evening? Mr. Johansson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The West Sacramento Housing Development Corporation met on May 24th. The, aside from looking at the solar contracts, we were looking at power purchase agreements with the, with the company. We're continuing to investigate the viability of that and the use on, on some of the, the facilities. But the most significant item that's going to be coming here is the circulation of the Memorandum of Understanding Jamboree Development on Delta Lane. I understand that that's been transmitted to the city, and we'll be seeing that shortly. The housing, Yolo County Housing Met on May 17th, really the only item outside of presentations from the Rotary Club and, and some other folks, was to go paperless. So there's a current discussion now of using iPads similar to what we've done, in addition to creating some type of IT policy for the use of those iPads. Thirdly, I was able to attend the Concert Court Luncheon with Mike Lukin and Bill Panos. And this is, was sponsored by the Northern California World Trade Center. We had Deputy Assistant Secretary for Manufacturing from the US Department of Commerce, Peter Perez, basically giving a presentation about the current administration initiatives for manufacturing. Right now, manufacturing is leading the recovery in the United States, is providing stable jobs, and 60% of our exports are coming from manufacturing, in addition to the national security interest that we have, of course, in, in exporting. But there's also a national export initiative from the White House. And he explained basically what that is, is a combination of advocacy, export finance, or making available the export, export finance, which could play into, you know, what we're doing with our port here and the regional efforts. Also, they're going to be addressing barriers of trade to try to remove some of those, which has historically been a problem in, in, you pick your country of choice, and there's barriers of trade that is, is an ongoing process. And also, trade, trademark enforcement is the other huge issue. So it was a very informative event. Doris Matsui gave a brief presentation, as did Lynda Katehi from the University of California. So it was a good, good presentation. And today, I attended as an alternate to the Sacramento, West Sacramento Downtown Riverfront Streetcar Project, and I will let my, once we'll give a report on that. Thanks.
All right, are there reports this evening, Mr. Ledesma? Yes, thank you. I'll report on the Riverfront, Downtown Riverfront Streetcar Project. We did have a meeting today. And Mayor Cabaldin, myself, who are the members of that committee, did attend that. It was this morning over at the Sacramento City Hall. Among the, among the presentations and actions we had today, we're really just continuing to get updates on the efforts to revise the Memorandum of Understanding that will become as a result of some new actions we're, we're taking to enter the project into a federal program, hopefully to find funding and, and to continue that project forward. SECOG will be taking the lead as, as sort of the organizing body that, that we'll be working on behalf of the jurisdictions involved. So we received an update on that. We received an update on the project team that's been selected in Fair and Peers that will be actually doing a lot of the alternative analysis in the next few months. But this is definitely a project, as we heard today, that is being pushed forward by not only ourselves, but our colleagues across the river and the Sacramento City Council, who have, we are trying to urge this to keep moving forward at a rapid pace. I think today we heard that we can expect some community outreach to begin possibly in as early as August, and with some updates coming back to us September, if not earlier. So again, that's as much of the update as we had. Mr. Mayor, if you want to add anything to that report? Also, met two weeks ago with the Yellow Natural Heritage Program, JPA Board, heard some actions and updates on that plan. There was some discussion for our, regarding the inclusion of our city in some of the projects, particularly the flood control projects, and inclusion into the planning of our, the heritage programs being planned. And we are going to be, at least that one project is now being added into there, as well as the consideration of other projects, to be, benefit from that plan that's being developed by the Yolo Heritage, Natural Heritage Program. So anyway, that was a brief update there. We just have some normal business as usual on budgeting, and, but other than that, that's all I have. You, Ennio Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one item to report on the city school, two by two. We met last night, just the one item that I wanted to follow up, back up with for the rest of the council, and that is the... of the council and that is, because I brought it up as a result of a county transportation district meeting, and that is that the school district has been communicating with the staff at the county transportation district because of the potential, or the actual cuts that are gonna occur to the bus service for kids in the Washington Unified School District. So as it turns out, at the moment, the district does not seem to think that it's gonna be a major disruption to folks, you know, kids getting to school, but they are cautiously optimistic about some adjustments. They are interested in, and I think they mentioned some software programs that are gonna be available to them to superimpose some of the routes to see whether or not the transportation district's current routes could potentially serve as a backup should the need arise for kids to use the public bus system for school. But at the moment, they don't anticipate there being any major needs for that. So I just wanted to follow back up and let the council know that's the status on that issue. That's it.
All right, those are all the reports. I will be in the annual meeting of the U.S. Conference of Mayors next week. Mr. Viegas will still be in town in case there's an urgent ribbon cutting to be done and at that meeting will be, I've submitted a series of resolutions in the education area, which is the area of the conference that I chair, but the, but also two, a resolution on the Section 104 crediting issue and also one on the use of the Harbor Maintenance Trust Fund and maintaining the, well, restoring the integrity of that fund so that the funds that are in that fund, in that trust fund are actually spent for port deepening and modernization projects. So those will be taken up for a vote by the mayors of the country next, at the end of next week. All right, Item 12's appointments. We don't have those this evening, so we're gonna proceed to Item 2, which is Presentation of a Certificate to the City of West Sacramento by Healthy Eating, Active Living. Heel?
Good evening, Mayor Cabaldon, members of the council. I'm pleased to be here to introduce Ron Groper to the Senior Vice President and Area Manager for Kaiser Permanente. He's here representing the Healthy Eating and Active Living Campaign that you remember we joined a couple of years ago to give a presentation.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. Reading glasses. I'm Ron Groper, the Senior Vice President and Area Manager for the Sacramento Area Medical Center, which includes the Yolo County area. Kaiser is proud to be a partner with the California Center for Public Health Advocacy, the San Francisco Community Foundation, the League of California Cities, in the Healthy Eating, Active Living, or Heal Cities Campaign. Kaiser Permanente believes that good health is a fundamental right shared by all. To that end, Kaiser Permanente's work in the community brings together financial resources and the talent and the commitment of people and our 60-plus years of healthcare and health plan experience. Each year in the Sacramento area, the not-for-profit Kaiser organization contributes over $200 million in subsidized health plan coverage for low-income and working poor families. Charity care is given in our hospitals, clinics, through community benefit grant, and in volunteer clinical and technical support to reduce the health disparities and to promote healthier communities. Since 2003, Kaiser Permanente has provided over $630,000 in support of the Yolo County Children's Alliance Program in West Sacramento and Yolo County. Tonight, Kaiser Permanente commends the City of West Sacramento for its strong commitment to making healthy eating and active living a priority for its residents. Following the council's 2009 resolution identifying obesity as a serious threat to the health and well-being of adults, childrens, and families in the West Sacramento, the city committed to helping citizens make healthy lifestyle choices through its land use and policy decisions. Following that resolution, the City of West Sacramento has utilized its Two by Two Committee made up of two board members and two city council members to collaborate with the Yolo County Children's Alliance and the Washington School District on making key improvement in areas of need such as the Westfield Neighborhood. Successes include a new walking trail, new restrooms, a new play structure, many, many trees, and erasing graffiti, among a host of other things. None of these successes could have been accomplished without the exemplary commitment of the West Sacramento Mayor and the City Council. On behalf of Kaiser Permanente, we commend the council and are proud to recognize the City of West Sacramento with this plaque commemorating its status as an active Heal City. Congratulations.
Well, on behalf, on behalf of the council and the community, thank you very, very much for the recognition. This is a very key priority for us. It's been in our council's very precious strategic plan for the last several years and when we first launched work in this arena, it was not easy. When we're talking about it today, we say it's healthy eating and active living. Those are like motherhood and apple pie. Maybe apple pie is part of the problem, but they sound so like, well, who could have a problem with that? And when we first started this effort, I remember very clearly someone standing right at that podium when we were talking about tackling obesity saying, "How dare you say that anybody in our community is fat? That's rude and that's not the job of the city." And it was part of our initial work to try to really look at our, at what we were doing as our policies, not to tell people what to do, but to change the kinds of choices that were here and the opportunities that they have, to deal with things like food deserts and creating real access to healthy produce, fresh foods through things like the farmer's market here in the central part of the community, like the urban farm stand that was at Bright Park. So dealing with issues around food specifically, around walking and safe walking and bicycling and other alternative means of getting around that were healthier as well and land use patterns that supported that. And sometimes when we have debates about, you know, whether there's a drive-through or not, it's partly about the operation. It's partly around what it does to the walking environment. The whole range, virtually everything that we do now is part of the lens is precisely these sorts of policy questions and we've learned a lot. Our community's learned a lot and we're getting better. We have a long way to go. I think it was, you know, this week or last, you know, the latest results around childhood obesity in our, at least among schoolchildren in the community were released and we continue to have challenges, but the partnership by lots of folks in the community, a lot of community organizations and others, and the support of Heal, both through, through recognitions like this, through the conferences and symposiums and newsletters and studies and great examples of what others are doing that we learned from, that I, you know, all of us have participated in, in those kinds of activities of professional development's been super helpful. And then partners like Kaiser, without which that Westfield project that you mentioned is just one example of the kinds of investments that Kaiser's made in the community to really bring this to life and to realize that you can't have a healthy community if there's no, if there's no safe place to play as a child and you can't, or you can't get, you can't walk safely to get to fresh food or to, or to the library and that those small things are exactly what adds up to the sorts of choices and environments that promote good health and a better community. And so thank you very much for the, for the recognition and for the spurring of our, of our work and our activity and for the, then for the financial help where it's been, where it's been available to help to accelerate that as well. We truly, truly appreciate it and I think we're making a lot of progress together. Did you want to say Mr. Johansson's been central to this work as well?
Well, thank you. Yeah, I'd just like to thank you for making the presentation and the award and also just to recognize the contribution that Heal has made to the resources that are available because as you may know, we're going through our general plan and I know that staff have had the opportunity to contact the Heal representatives and the California Center for Public Health Advocacy to look at what elements can go in a general plan in terms of institutionalizing some of these health elements we're talking about, not only the bicycles and the pedestrian movement, but, but access to fresh fruits and vegetables and in particular to the senior population and how that senior population interacts with the availability of these types of things. And the Heal group has been a huge resource, I know to our staff, to helping us move that forward as well.
Nice. Thank you. On behalf of Kaiser, we thank you and we appreciate the opportunity to partner with you.
All right. Thank you so much for being with us tonight. All right, that brings us then to the consent agenda, which is Items 3 through 8. And at our desk, the council has an amendment to Item 3 before us with respect to the appropriations limit for fiscal year 2012-13. And then the city clerk reminds me that the, there's a misprint in the agenda, which, for Item 7, which is the conduct of the municipal election on November 7, 2012, the date should be November 6, 2012, to best align it with the election for everything else. So the, so the date for Item 7 would be November 6 and the text of the amendment to Item 3 is at your desks. So that, are there any items to remove from the consent agenda or any items for separate question or comment?
Just have a question on 7.
Others? All right, then Item 7 is Consideration of Resolution 12-25 Calling an Election and Requesting the Board of Supervisors to Permit the County Clerk to Render Specified Services to the City Relating to the Conduct of a Municipal Election on November 6, 2012.
Yeah, Chris, the only question I have is, is when can we start to pull our nomination papers? When does that process take place?
July 16.
July 16. Okay, thank you.
So anyone, any resident of the community that's registered to vote can pull their nomination papers starting July 16?
That's correct.
Okay.
Especially me.
Especially Mr. Kristof.
Need all the time I can get.
All right, so if there's no further questions, is there a motion on the consent agenda? All right, it's been moved by Mr. Johansson and seconded by Mr. Kristof that the consent agenda with those two modifications be adopted. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye and opposed. Hearing none, that motion carries. Item 9 is a public hearing and report of Measure K Revenue and Disbursements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Nattish Sharma with the City Finance Department. One of the requirements of Measure K is that the city will annually publish a report to the community following a public hearing. In your packet, we have included a proposed report that provides revenue and detailed expenditure information on how the money was originally allocated, revenues from other sources, and how much we have spent to date. Over the past nine years, we spent a total of $45.7 million, which includes revenues from other sources. Of this, 60% of the revenues were allocated to transportation-related programs, 11% towards public safety, 7% towards parks and recreation, and 22% to other programs. The annual report also includes specific information. For example, a fully-staffed truck stationed at Station 45 and runs as a company and responds to structural fires, vehicle accidents, and conducts business inspections. Also, funds allocated to Yolo County Library allows the library to open four hours every Sunday, maintaining full services to the citizens. In addition, over 600-plus children benefit from the Measure K-funded after-school program. In February 2003, the city council adopted Resolution 0258, providing guidance to staff regarding the spending of the half cent of the sales tax proceeds. The sales tax revenue is split 50/50 between base allocation and capital allocation. In your packet, we have included a scorecard that demonstrates that staff has adhered to council's direction. The scorecard is broken into base allocation and capital 10-year allocation. Regarding the base allocation, we allocate funds on an as-needed basis. For example, you may note, we have allocated funding for the operations of library and First Five program. In addition, the funding for water rate reduction is greater than originally anticipated and this is primarily due to the growth that we experienced between 2001 and 2007. Currently, as you can see in the report, that we are not allocating any funds to the light rail operations and once we have light rail, we'll allocate some funds on there. In capital allocation, we assigned the full allocation at the beginning of the program instead of annually. This was part of the accelerated road rehab program that we adopted. This actually allowed us to advance fund mostly the road rehab projects, which is in final stage. We have two projects that we will be, we are in the process of designing and then we'll be coming to council for construction contract. We are planning to publish this annual report in the local newspaper, the newsletter, and then also on the city's website by June 30. A copy of the report is also available in the City Finance Department and, yes, in the City Finance Department. The purpose of this public hearing is to address any questions or concerns before this report is published. This completes my report and I'd like to turn it to you, Mr. Mayor, for any questions or comments the council may have and open the public hearing.
All right, are there any questions for staff at this time?
Yes, public hearing.
All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to open the public hearing. We don't have any written requests to speak on this item, but does anyone wish to address the council on Item 9? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Kristof?
Yeah. I'd just like to thank you for, for the report. I mean, this is something that we started a number of years ago. I can't remember, eight, nine, something like that, but nine years ago. And we had said at that time that every year, because we went to the voters and quite frankly, it wasn't really, you know, the time for raising taxes or a sales tax initiative and that sort of thing. There were some difficult things going on, but at the same time, we knew we had the needs, especially for flood protection and, and some of these other projects that you talked about. And we said at that time that this is what we were going to do. If you trust us with your money, we will put, every year, we will show you where we spend your tax dollars for this sales tax override. And we have done that and it has been extremely well-received by the community at large and I think it gives the council, staff credibility. And so I just wanted to thank you for continuing to make this yearly report and, and continue to build the trust that we can with the people that pay the bills. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kristof. I think that's exactly where the transparency of this program has been precisely what we promised and, and I know both in this report, but also in the annual budget process, the council is quite insistent with sometimes over council attorney, city manager, and finance director about not allowing this money to kind of seep into the regular budget, that we said this was a supplement, that essentially what we were doing was using the fact that we generate sales taxes from a lot of visitors and businesses that aren't local residents and we'd never had a way to support some of the key things citywide that we could do in new development areas, right? There was just no source of funding to do things in the rest of the city that weren't the subject of big development projects because there was no developer fees and this was a way for us to bring, to lift all boats in the community. And the council's had a great deal of fidelity to that original principle and I think the, you know, I am proud of the level of transparency that this has accomplished and certainly the voters, when they reauthorize Measure UNB, you know, give another vote of confidence. So thanks for continuing to get this, get this right. All right, and so the request motion is for direct, the Director of Administrative Services or the city manager or his designee to publish the report of revenue and disbursements?
Sharma.
All right. So moved and seconded. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye and opposed. Hearing none, that motion carries. Item 10 is a workshop on alarm permit program.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, I'd like to provide some information about the city's current alarm permit program. A little background, in 2004, the council approved an ordinance requiring alarm permits for anyone with active alarm systems. approved an ordinance requiring alarm permits for anyone with active alarm systems. That ordinance also incorporates a penalty provision for false alarms. And currently, there are some issues identified with the alarm program and the ordinance. There are no fees for permits to offset the administrative costs of processing applications. There are no penalty provisions that are in keeping with actual cost and industry standards, and there's no process for tracking and enforcing the penalty provisions. Some statistics, the police department responds to an average of 2,370 calls for false alarms per year, which equates to 99% of all the alarm calls. And the cost associated with officer response for those calls is approximately $121,000 annually. And national studies and information from other law enforcement agencies show that there's a 70% decrease for false alarms in cities that enforce an alarm program. And based on this information, it would be advantageous to revise the current ordinance, the fee structure, and the program administration. The agenda report submitted to council provides a benchmark survey of other local agency fee structures, and a cost analysis for in-house versus outsourced alarm program management. At this time, I'd like to open it up for discussion.
Mr. Johansson?
Thank you. Going through the analysis that you've done, so this basically costs $121,000 a year, the calls of this. I'm looking through the analysis, and it looks like we're, the fourth alarm is really kind of where we jump up above everyone in the region. Is this punitive? I mean, of course, there's a cost recovery element of this, but do we have any idea what the proposed schedule would do in terms of recovering the $121,000 of cost, and the excess amount, I guess, would be more punitive?
We did some nexus studies to determine the actual cost, and the rest is, you know, to encourage alarm owners to service their alarms. And there is an actual breakdown of the cost recovery, the cost analysis, if we were to do an in-house or an outsourced program.
All right, and then the 2,370, 2,370 false alarms, do we have an idea how many of those are second, third, and fourth?
Currently, our system, our crime analyst tried to extract that information out of our system, and that's one of the other issues, is that the programs that we use, that links to our dispatch system, is not able to pull that information. So one of the things that we're looking at is the software that we would go with, whether that be in-house or outsourced. That program actually links to our CAD dispatch system, is able to pull those types of reports, so we can better monitor, you know, where people are at with their false alarms, and if we need to issue, you know, penalties or so forth.
All right, and then finally, I mean, I'd like to see some type of, something that shows that this is having the intended effect at some point, you know, maybe some statistics that show false alarms, and maybe by the first, second, third, and fourth, to see if this is actually doing what it's supposed to be doing.
So if we were to implement, just do a follow-up?
Yeah, some way to measure this, to see if really this is what it's supposed to be doing. And at that point, we can, you know, maybe talk about it, but just start accumulating that data.
Lidesma?
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity and the presentation. First, the scope of this is, I'm assuming it doesn't necessarily fall out, this is both residential and commercial alarm services, correct?
Correct.
Okay, because now I'm in scope, because I have my own alarm service and probably have caused one of the false alarms. And I'll throw my wife under the bus at the moment. But is it, are you looking at the proposed fee being retroactive, and the folks that currently have it have the services, wouldn't have to have the annual application fee? So if it began whatever date, it would be effective, and folks would have to sign up that year? Is that the way you're looking at implementing this?
Correct. Right now, no one has paid any fees. They just have filled out a piece of paper, which makes it impossible to track, are they still active, are they not? It just kind of goes in a file. So if we were to implement an actual permit application structure similar to what's outlined, then we would have a date where, you know, as of this date, everybody needs to submit an application and an application fee and be registered in the program.
Okay, and then, and my questioning was similar to Mr. Johansson's, which is on a proposed fines. Obviously, the first one is no fine, but is it meant to be punitive or just for cost recovery purposes? Obviously, you want to send a message to manage your alarm system, but my questioning's similar in vain.
Yeah, let me help Donna with that one. The purpose of the program, obviously, is to recover some of the cost. Actually, you see the second alarm, false alarm cost there is $55. That is actually a calculated cost on what it, the cost of two officers responding to an alarm call at 20 minutes each, from the time of dispatch to the time of clearing the call, based on an average salary. So that one is an actual number. The other, the subsequent alarms are designed to put in place an incentive to fix your alarms, so that we're not spending those resources on responding to false alarms, as you heard the data, that 99% of all the alarms, in fact, the actual number is, out of those 2,370 alarms, only 21 were actually, you know, valid alarms, and where we either made arrests or found entry, and have taken reports on those. So it's an incentive to fix those alarms, so we're not using those resources, and we can apply them in other areas to other issues in the city.
Is there a difference in how you respond to how a residential alarm, I mean, you still have to have the call, and the difference between residential and commercial call? So if you're at a commercial building out in the industrial park in Southport, you obviously, you know, there's no one there 24/7, the call goes off. Again, I'm just asking the question, should there be a difference in hearing between commercial and?
Actually, the initial response is the same. The way alarm calls are prioritized, there are two officer calls. And so if it was a residential alarm, or it was a large industrial site, that initial response would be two officers. Now, upon arrival, depending on the circumstances, access points, perimeter, they may ask for additional officers, but the initial response is the same.
Okay. And I would just say I'm supportive of this, because I think it should be, it's the right thing to do, because we are calling resources to be out in neighborhoods and make calls, and for a mistake or whatever else. So I think this is a good road to go. Just I think we have a little more research to see, and maybe some of that research come back on where our calls are actually spent, first time, second time, is to get a better indicator who might fall into this. Thank you.
Other comments?
Yeah, I guess for me, I think that the first two calls, there should not be a fee for. But if you go more than two within, what's the period of time that you have?
It's within a one-year period?
Twelve months.
Twelve-month period.
Within what?
Within a one-year period.
One-year period?
Yeah.
So I think that, I mean, because a lot of times, parents out there now, they have, you know, their children, their children, you set the alarm, they open the door, and then they close it real quick, and they take off, they don't say anything to the parents. All of a sudden, the call goes in, and then you have, you know, and then, you know, all of a sudden, either they leave or something happens, and then that's counted as, and I understand that our officers are responding. But at the same time, I'd like to see a little bit of leeway, so that this really doesn't become punitive. You know, mistakes are made, especially in the alarm business and that sort of thing. And, I mean, I can understand it more for businesses. And so if we did really have a two-tier system, I would put one as commercial or business, and another one as alarms for, you know, residential. Probably get more commercial calls than you would residential calls. But at the same time, you know, sometimes if the kids have done something in any way, all of a sudden, it just seems pretty tough to hit them with 55 bucks for, you know, within, especially a year's time. So anyway, those are just my thoughts.
Air President Villegas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the breakdown, following up on Bill's comment about the percentage, is it split about even with residential and commercial, or do you know what the breakdown would be?
Yeah, that's the information the crime analysis staff was trying to extract, and it was going to take hours and hours of going through hands-by-hand the CAD system. So again, that's one of the things that we think would be beneficial to implement a program, which includes a software, because we could actually have that at the ready. And so when we are coming back with information to see how well the program is running, and the results that we're getting, that's one of the things that we're looking forward to.
Yeah, I would be interested, certainly, in putting that in as a sort of a check-in point, to make sure that we're not disproportionately charging commercial versus residential if the bulk of the cost associated with the response and the response time is associated with one or the other. So I would certainly want to know, you know, where are we spending more of our time, and as we adjust the fees accordingly, it should make sense. I guess I'm with Bill a little bit on that first, I mean, you're talking about the first year, and I think there is, I mean, in my opinion, I believe that folks who actually invest in an alarm system, in some ways, are sort of helping out the sort of the public safety issue that we're all trying to deal with. And so I think getting penalized $55 on top of, you know, an initial application fee of 35, I can see very easily having a couple mishaps with that new alarm in the next, in the first couple of weeks, and all of a sudden, boom, you're tagged with a $55 cost for a couple mishaps. And I understand there's a cost associated with that, and that cost recovery needs to go with it. But I just don't, I just, I struggle sometimes with sort of nickel and diamond people to death, and I know there needs to be a cost recovery associated with it. But I would personally favor, you know, Bill's suggestion of holding off initially until we have better data to determine where the cost's actually being borne, before we just jump into that second, you know, that second false alarm is going to cost you $55 for folks that are trying to do something to secure their residences. I just, I'm just not sure, I'm there with that yet. The concept sounds good, I'm just not sure I'm ready to go for 55. And then your third alarm, within that 12-month period, goes to $110. I mean, that's, that's...
That's the 55.
That's, yeah, I, yeah, I mean, I would shift those numbers down a bit until we refine it. I mean, I don't know if we have to get a cost recovery program instituted right away. I mean, I can see us working there, but I just, yeah, that's my, that's my initial reaction to the proposal.
I'm for it. I mean, maybe it's because I'm an economist, but to me, saying one or two of our police officers is not going to be protecting another part of the city because they are answering these calls is a significant cost. It's a significant cost to the whole community. This is a regressive program, right? It's not, it's not as though in-house alarm systems that are connected to the police department are widespread across the community. You know, a lot of households cannot afford them. And so to be directing a disproportionate amount of police resources to the wealthiest households is fine, but we need to make sure it's actually getting the outcome. And clearly, at 99% false alarms, it's not getting there. And just like, you know, the enforcement, if you allow a child to have access to a gun in the house, and a lot of mistakes can happen, you know, a child can find the gun that you thought you hid, the consequences of getting that wrong are severe, and they need to be, because the consequences, the potential consequences are severe for the child and for the community. And so for me, it is a big deal when we treat it at home as though, well, you know, mistakes happen. It needs to be very clear. You don't touch the gun cabinet, and you don't, and the alarm system goes right to the police department, and it is immoral for us to call a police officer away from somewhere else to service a false alarm. So kids, you have, you are responsible for making sure that the whole community is protected. So I mean, I don't, I'm not wedded to any of the specific numbers, but I do think a strong set of fiscal incentives is appropriate, given a 99% false alarm rate. And that doesn't have to be there, because most of these are either problems with the maintenance of the system, or, you know, lacks, you know, lacks cultural behavior in our own homes, because there's no consequences to getting it wrong right now. Right? So we, it's just totally natural for human beings. No consequences, then I will, you know, I'll treat it, you know, it goes down the list of things that I need to make clear to the kids, this, okay, this, you're going to be grounded for a week. If there's no consequences to me, there's not going to be consequences for them either. So for me, I'm not opposed to the other notions that are out there, but to me, you know, having like the first two or three or four for free, and then the next one's $50 or something, does not get to, does not change the kind of behaviors that we need to. $120,000 is an entire police officer. That's a whole police officer that we are wasting doing this. And so I, for me, I would like to see this to be, the program to look something like this, in terms of its basic framework, partly for cost recovery, but mostly to reduce the amount of, you know, pretty abject waste that is happening in our system that is not necessary, the waste that can be tackled by both better maintenance and better, you know, better education and just enforcement of ourselves in our own, in our own homes. So it sounds like you got your work, your work cut out for you, coming up with some alternatives that we might be able to look at to balance the different kinds of issues and priorities that have been raised here. Mr. Johansson?
Just a quick question. Are the, I mean, the alarm systems, I know, basically, you've got a company, Alarm Trips, it goes to the alarm company first. The alarm company then will try to reach the people, say if there's a problem, you know, give us a password, that kind of thing, and it never gets to the police department. Is it really common for alarms to go directly to the police department? And if that's the case, and maybe there could be some educational program along with this, saying that, look, to avoid this, you may want to get an alarm company that has this buffer, so it doesn't get to that point?
No, it is not common for any direct alarms. There was a time when there were direct alarms, but it is the scenario that you described, Councilman Johansson, where it goes to an alarm company, and then they try to resolve the issue if they can't. It goes to the communication center who then dispatches the unit. So that is the approach.
Right, so if a kid or something does it accidentally, they're going to call the parent, and it's going to be done, so these?
There is, there is an opportunity to cancel the alarm before it gets to the police, even in police or in route. Actually, that 2,370 calls, we did not include the council calls, where we're already in route and have spent some time.
You didn't say council, right? You said canceled.
I'm sorry, that's what I meant.
I thought you said canceled.
Not council calls.
I know we're not making that many.
We did not include the canceled calls in this, where, and I don't know if you remember the number off the top, but there was a significant, another over 1,000 calls where we had a partial response before it was canceled. And then, like you said, some were canceled before it even got to us, because the alarm companies have that opportunity to do that.
So even after they can't confirm with the owners, they call the police department, and they subsequently get a hold of the owners, they call the police department and cancel it?
Correct.
And there would be an actual educational program with this, so, you know, obviously there'd be a notification to the community that this would be going into place. With the actual application that gets mailed out, we would put an educational flyer or brochure in there, and also a link to the website. We would build an actual educational quiz or something to that effect on them, so that they would have ample opportunity to know how to service their alarms and so forth.
There, excuse me, there is one other approach that is out there in the industry, and that is a verified, a non-response unless it's a verified alarm. That's a relatively new concept. The city of Fremont has been the leader in this, has been doing this for several years now, where they will not respond to certain types of alarms unless there's a verified response, or, yeah, verified response. And that is somebody else, either it's called in by a neighbor, for instance, who actually sees that, hey, the door is open, the window is broken, or some, some systems are monitored where you can listen in, the alarm companies can listen in and actually hear movement and noise within the, within the residence, let's say it's a resident. Other times, the alarm program is, or the alarm service is associated with a private security response, and they respond and check and find open doors, broken windows, and then the police respond. That is another model that's out there in the industry that I thought, just share that with you at this point, so.
So are you suggesting that that model, I'm sorry, but that...
So, are you suggesting that that model, I'm sorry, but that model is something you'll consider? Because it, what, that's the latter part you just mentioned. If there's an alarm company involved and they respond, or, and, and this is probably at more of a commercial business use, where you have private contractors and they show up and...
Actually, it can, it can be done in residential too, in some, so what happens is, in, in some ways, alarm companies are incentivized to get into that business, to, to actually respond and check alarms. So, and they always are brought up to, to gauge your reaction, to see if there's any interest in, in us looking at that or presenting information on that item.
Christopher?
Chief, one of the things that I have noticed in, in the alarm realm, so to speak, and that is when, when a false alarm goes off, somebody's not home. But it does, the false alarm goes off for whatever reason. They close the door too late, or who knows what. But one of the things that, that I have seen in some of the neighborhoods, and that is the goodwill that the police department gets for responding. When they respond and they look around, quite frankly, the neighbors notice, they take notice. And you guys get a lot of good kudos and, and goodwill that, you know, you really can't measure. But, you know, it's, it, it is, I can tell you in some other areas, you might wait forty-five, fifty minutes to get somebody to respond to, to an alarm. Doesn't happen here in West Sacramento. Seems to be, you know, fairly quick. So, I think our folks out there, I think they, they, they truly appreciate that. And there is a lot of goodwill with that.
All right, do you have some feedback?
Mr. Mayor, there was one area where I'd invite your, your feedback or your attention to. Didn't know if you had looked at the, the two approaches where it's an, an in-house, where we build the program in-house and, and service it in-house versus outsourcing it. You can see from our initial quick analysis, it appears to be more cost-effective to outsource it than to do it in-house. And so, we didn't want to leave without maybe some input on that particular point.
I, I don't care. I mean, as long as you come back with a decent staff report that makes a little bit of sense, that gives the folks out there some, some kind of a break, you know? I really don't have a whole lot of problems.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. I, I would like to see the most efficient one, with the possible exception that, to the extent to which the budget requires us to be making other staff reductions, that if there are personnel that we have that might otherwise be subject to some sort of layoff provision or whatever, that might potentially have the capacity to do this, that we, that we consider that as well, so that, so that we're not, we're not simultaneously contracting out for something that a staff person could do and contemplate any sort of layoff actions.
Okay. All right, thank you. That brings us into item eleven, which is presentation and discussion of ordinance twelve dash three and ordinance twelve dash seven regarding proposed amendments to the West Sacramento zoning ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor Cobaldon and members of the city council. The proposed zone amendments span a variety of topics and include a lot of cleanup, editorial changes, minor amendments, new definitions, amendments to the land use, zoning matrix, and changes to the city's parking requirements. Many of the proposed changes are pretty much self-explanatory, and the staff report provides context for the proposed changes that may not be readily apparent in the draft ordinances. The changes are contained in two ordinances, ordinance twelve dash three and ordinance twelve dash, dash seven. And twelve dash seven includes the changes recommended to the parking requirements. The only changes that I would like to highlight in the ordinance twelve dash three involve daycare centers, firearms dealers, and discretionary permits. And daycare centers are allowed in most zones in the city, either as a principal standalone use or as an accessory use. And this use is allowed as a principal use in the business park zone and the limited industrial zone. And staff is recommending that the use be allowed as an accessory use in these zones, since both zones allow some industrial uses that might not be compatible with daycare centers, depending on the surrounding land uses. This change, however, would not affect properties that are already subject to development agreements like Riverside Center and Southport Industrial Park. We're proposing to add firearms dealer broker to the land use matrix, and this is consistent with a determination that was made by the planning commission two years ago. And the planning commission determined that this use should be defined as other business services. And lastly, the expiration period for discretionary permits is proposed to be expanded from one year to two years in the absence of a specific time limit set by the planning commission. Since there is no similar language for design review approvals, the same language will also apply to these permits as well. And moving on to ordinance twelve dash seven, the changes proposed in this ordinance includes amendments to the city's parking requirements, and the changes are based on the comprehensive parking study that, that was prepared by Wilber Smith and Associates in two thousand eight. Staff is taking a proactive approach in dealing with parking in the urban districts. And as the urban areas develop, the parking strategies will move in tandem with the new development. So, the most significant change in the ordinance is, is the, the creation of a separate section for the city's urban districts. As the districts develop and as they build out, we, you know, foresee additional changes being made to the parking regulations. So, it just seemed to make sense at this time to create a separate section for this district. In the urban district section of the draft ordinance, you'll see text that is carried over from the existing ordinance, which is shown in black, and the new language is shown in red. The only changes that I would like to highlight in that draft ordinance include the on-street parking, minimum maximum parking ratios, and car sharing, which would be applicable only in the urban districts. The proposed amendments allow up to twenty percent of the required parking for mixed-use and residential park, uh, projects to be provided on the street, provided that structured parking is proposed and that the on-street parking is approved via the city's preferential parking program. Minimum maximum parking ratios are being proposed for non-residential land uses. These ratios are based on the ratios that were adopted for the Bridge District. I need to point out that if a developer wants to exceed the proposed maximum parking ratios, a conditional use permit would be required. The draft ordinance also includes car sharing, which is being offered as an incentive to reduce parking. A five percent reduction in parking is proposed for projects requiring fifty or less parking spaces, and a ten percent reduction in parking is being, is, is proposed for projects requiring more than fifty spaces. And there are some other changes, but I think it's pretty self-explanatory. This concludes my presentation. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that the city council may have at this time. And I'd like to point out that the public, public hearing and the first reading is proposed for July eighteenth.
Mr. Johannesburg?
Thank you, Sandra. Chickens. I, I haven't really been keeping track of, of what happened in Sacramento. I know there is a lot of police press on this issue. And I know this restricts to just hens and not roosters. Have, has there been any significant issue with that in Sacramento?
I think a couple of years ago, I, I, I think they might have done something last year, I just can't remember.
That allowed or disallowed?
But I think they do allow, I think they are allowing backyard chickens in Sacramento.
Okay, now, is there, I mean, obviously, it's, it's an animal that, you know, may have odor and things of that nature. And there's probably difference of having this type of animal in really densely populated areas versus more rural areas. So, this is basically R one A, R one B. So, for example, Bridgewater Island. I, I'm just not sure about the ramifications of this. I, I don't know, maybe you can explain that a little bit? You know, part of the problem that, that we all have is people get into neighbor wars. And, you know, it's either Arby's parked out in front or someone doing something in their backyard. And I'd be really interested to see if this is, may potentially be a problem. I, I, you know, it's, it's a, I think it's probably good in certain areas, but other areas may create problems.
There have been a fair amount of complaints that we've received over the years through code enforcement. Either they, they have roosters with the chickens, that's a common complaint that we get in Southport especially. There are also complaints with, if even just with the hens, them getting out of the yard and starting to occupy their neighbors' yards or down the street. And, and they're not easy to catch either. So, there has been a fair amount. I don't have the exact number, but I know it was enough for code enforcement to ask us to raise this to planning commission and take a look at it.
Okay, so, but this would allow...
It would allow them, it just, it limits the number of them, and it makes it more clear on the keeping of, of chickens, as opposed to the current ordinance on animal keeping.
Okay. I mean, I just, we hear from the rest of us of what that, that means. Now, the zero lot line adjustments, so basically, when you have a small backyard, the way this reads, it's what, five feet from the, the lot line? So, you basically limit the size of the pool, and the chamber chimed in, that they want a little more flexibility in this?
Yeah, there, well, there was some concern that if we eliminate swimming pools from the zero lot line agreement, that it, it, they wouldn't have the flexibility to, to have pools essentially. But it seems that in Southport, we've been processing a number of, over the years, zero lot lines for patio covers per small accessory structures. And it doesn't, didn't seem that pools have been an issue, particularly in Southport, where we would have some smaller lots.
Okay, so this hasn't really risen, a lot of complaints about this?
No.
All right. And then, lastly, on the, the parking, I mean, this is consistent with what we're doing in the Bridge District, and you've, you've all talked to the developers in the area and received their feedback. Is this any, I mean, I haven't heard any problems with this, it seems to be acceptable?
The proposed amendments were shared with the, with the, the owners, and they were, seemed to be acceptable with the changes we're proposing.
All right, thank you.
Christopher?
I guess, wind development really starts to take off again. And I mean, I think that it'll happen one of these days. I'd be, it's some time off, but it'll happen one of these days. One of the things that I would like to try to do is put together a pilot program that allows for no on-street parking, none whatsoever. I think that some of the older and established neighborhoods now, it's an impossibility. You just can't make it work. But at the same time, I think that there is that possibility in the, in the future. So, I, I would like to have some kind, something in there for a pilot program or something, some developer to work with staff to see if, if something like that could happen. And then, as far as parking in the Bridge District and urban areas and other things, I mean, I, I realize why we want to restrict it, because you really want to get people out of their cars. You want them bicycling, you want them on buses, or you want them on trains or whatever else, streetcars. And I realize that that's one of the goals that you want to do. But one of the things that I don't want to do, and that is, is to have it so restrictive that it has a tendency to make somebody not want to move there, or has tendency to have a negative effect. And if you make it so that there's not adequate parking and it is not convenient, then I think you could run into the possibilities of harming commercial or retail kinds of components of that, as well as the apartment folks, townhouse folks, or whatever it is, that have more than one car. And I don't know what the answer is. And, and, and I realize that there's a, an effort underway to try to get people out of the cars and not even have them. But at the same time, I think the folks of California, they're going to drive, and I don't think they're going to give up their cars. And I realize that they can buy an additional parking place or something like that, but that's going to add to the price of the house. So, anyway, it's just, that's just my philosophical approach to this. It's probably not going anywhere, but at the same time, I just wanted to say it. Thank you.
I, I probably slightly disagree.
I think so, yeah.
In part because I think we have, you know, the, everyone, in places like the Bridge District, every, all the existing property owners, but also people buying, are, are investing in a particular thing. And we're not sizing the roads and everything else to accommodate everybody having two cars. And so, it's more than just that we're, that we're, as, you know, some sort of social thing, we're trying to get people to give up their cars and bike and walk.
Oh, that's what you're trying to do.
It's not, it's, no, but, but if we, if we built the road system that would be necessary for that number of cars, we don't have the money to do it. There, there is not enough infrastructure. I mean, part of what's happening here is a, is a fiscal sustainability of the Bridge, of places like the Bridge District. So, if we, if we build it like as a transit and walking-oriented district, and then, you know, create, create the option for everybody to have two cars per, per bedroom, then it's going to be a disaster. It'll be just utter total gridlock constantly, all the time. And so, I, to me, it's, I mean, those policies have to line up. And in the, in the, in the rare instances where people say, I want to have multiple cars per unit or whatever, there will be other options. The market will open up, right? You know, people, other people will say, well, Mark decides he's not going to have a car at all. He likes biking and walking and car sharing, and so, he will, he will rent me his, the single space that he has, and I'll pay for it, but I'm, I should pay for it, because I'm buying into a district that has been created and financed based on me not having, you know, two cars per person. And that doesn't work financially or, you know, in a circulation way, if that doesn't work out. So, so, I mean, I get it, I think, you know, I think we're proceeding as we, we're learning as we go on, about this. And we're also understanding that, you know, if the transit's not in place and the bike and walking facilities aren't in place, then we, you know, people have to get around somehow. So, we've got to be very sensitive to those issues. But I don't, I just, I don't think we can build a place that is simultaneously bike and walk and transit-oriented and is also completely open to the same patterns of car, car usage and ownership and parking any longer. And it drives the cost of the development projects up so much. And the challenge, if you're a developer and you say, well, okay, I'm going to do what the city says, because it makes sense for me, right, to build less parking, parking is extraordinarily, extraordinarily expensive, and it ruins the pro forma for my project. But then, if you open up a project right across the street from me and average, you know, your big billboard is, and we have seven pieces, seven parking spaces per unit, then I am, you know, the investment that I have made in a walkable, bikeable, transit-oriented district disappears. And, and so, the, part of these rig, these rules create, you know, basic, a basic contract among the different property owners that we're all doing this together. So, to me, I'm, I'm, I mean, I, certainly the details I'm open to, but I think the general notion that our policies ought to, to, our parking policies ought to support our land use and transportation policies and our infrastructure finance plan is a, is a good one. On the chicken piece, I mean, I do have, I, in the long run, I don't know how you have a planet that has, where chickens are permitted everywhere and roosters nowhere. I mean, this is not, this, evolution-wise, this seems problematic. And I, I mean, it's, I mean, it's, it's disturbing to me, maybe it's because I'm not a chicken, but it just seems strange. I understand why, but, I mean, these aren't pets. And so, I mean, I understand, you know, folks are largely doing this because they are raising eggs or trying to, you know, be more self-sustaining at home and all of that, which is great, but that's not the same thing as having a dog or a cat. And so, we're squeezing it into this definition as though it were a dog, a cat, or a ferret. But it really isn't. And, and I, and I do worry, I mean, I think we should pay attention to this as we go forward. We actually will be the chicken hub of the region, because Sacramento only allows three chickens per, per parcel. And we would be allowing four, so if, all the chicken lovers, we would be, have a huge competitive advantage. I don't understand, for multifamily and apartments, though, it says you would get four chicken, four chickens per parcel, up to a half an acre. So, if you have a, if you have an apartment complex with, you know, forty units or something that sits on two acres or whatever, do those forty units... on two acres or whatever, do those 40 units share 16 chickens? Or, I mean, what's, how does it, it's entirely parcel size-based, no matter how many units are on the parcel, right? Or, how does this work?
Typically, yes. And that's primarily, that's how the Yolo County Animal Control and a lot of those animal keeping ordinances are based on a certain number of animals and type per acre.
And this is true for dogs and cats, too?
Yes.
So, if I'm building, if I'm building, to get back to the Bridge District, if I'm building a multi-story building of condos and all of, everybody that's moving in has little Shar Pei, those are dogs, right? The Shar Pei dogs. And they also have a cat, and maybe they're raising a chicken. I mean, is, are, do our small domestic animal policies discriminate against density?
No, I don't believe so.
Well, I mean, if I build a condo tower that's eight stories, and so, there's a lot of people living, a lot of units, and these Shar Peis, I guess, don't require a lot of space to run in because their legs are like this big. And so, everybody has a couple of those that you would quickly get past your four per half acre? Whereas if I'm just building one house on a large lot, then I get the full number. So, do we have sprawl-inducing chicken policies here?
We can take a look at that one. That's going to, that's going to require a little bit more math.
Yeah, okay. On the firearms piece, Walmart currently is not selling firearms?
That's correct.
And my, at least from at least one buyer who went in there last weekend, they said it was because they were told that Sacramento County doesn't allow that.
Sacramento County or Yolo?
The Walmart staff there said that's because Sacramento County has an ordinance that doesn't allow for them to sell firearms, but we're not in Sacramento County. Is it currently legal for them to do it?
I believe it is because in Yolo County, the Woodland Store actually sells firearms and ammunition. My recollection on that project, when we were processing River Point Marketplace and the Walmart Design Review and Building Permit Application, that was, happened right after they had had an incident at one of their stores in another state whereby someone came in and purchased a gun and ammo and then went out and committed a crime. And so, I think at that time, it was a conscious decision by Walmart not to carry it, given the proximity and in the metropolitan area. I think it may be more of a Walmart policy. I do know that they did coordinate with our police department on it as well.
All right. And my last question is on the daycare center piece. In addition to the chamber, have we consulted with anyone else? I mean, I think, in particular issues like this, given the composition of the council that we owe as a special level of scrutiny to our decisions, if we're making a decision that is going to restrict, constrain the potential supply of daycare facilities in the city, that we have checked in with the childcare industry, with the, you know, the children's advocates and others in the community to see their points of view about it, or we only ask the chamber?
Just a chamber.
Well, for me, I would like to, I would like to hear from the folks who are, who have the other, the other interest in mind, which is maximizing the availability and affordability of daycare and whether they agree. I mean, they obviously don't want to be next to industrial facilities either. But I, for me at least, I would just like to know that they've been a part of that consultation too.
Mr. Ledesma.
Thank you. If I could, on that point, I know that's an issue that came up in the past, that planning commission, and it really was driven by the affordability of space. It was always more affordable in some of the industrial uses, and we ran into some issues, I want to say out in Southport, Industrial Park was where we...
Yes, and Yolo Solana Air Quoty Management District also had some concerns about that.
Yeah, so...
So, this also sets a, kind of a trigger, too, so that we catch them, so that they can review them as well.
Okay. So, I know that's, kind of, the root of this, or at least the feedback we had years ago and the past few years regarding that. I had a question on the breweries. I'm just not, and the definitions of brew pubs and breweries, and similar to the question on daycare, do we consult folks on this? And what were we, what are we trying to achieve? I'm just not clear. We had the definitions, so we know what's a brewery, as the industrial user, and then the onsite brew.
We have been, we've received some inquiries in the past about some potential businesses that either, that conclude what we call a brew on premises store or brew. We did not have any definitions. We have definitions that cover food manufacturer, bottling plant, so they really didn't address breweries. And so, that's why we are proposing some new definitions. So, in the event that there is increased interest in, you know, relocating to the city, we'll have something in place in a zoning code and in our land use matrix as well.
And was this run by, is this standard definitions of breweries and brew pubs?
Yeah, we pulled these from the American Planning Association Dictionary of Zoning Terms and Definitions. And basically, this was to try to encourage, open the door more for them to come in and feed into the council's 2012 Strategic Planning Session, Food Industry Hub Consumption.
That's right. Okay. I just want to understand what you're getting at. Thank you. Other comments? All right, this item is workshop only, and we'll be back for public hearing and first reading of the ordinance on July 18th, of the ordinances on July 18th, 2012. Thank you. All right, that brings us to council calendar. Ms. Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there's a couple of corrections to the calendar that I wanted to make. On June 8th, the Upper West Sacramento Advisory Council meeting has been canceled. And I wanted to just alert the council to the open house on Fire Station 45 on June 16th. And omitted from the calendar was the fact that we are having a port meeting and a council meeting on July 11th. So, our vacation isn't that long in June to July.
Any questions on the calendar? Seeing non-city manager report.
Yes, we distributed in the packet a letter, an example letter from the chamber and some information regarding the SRCSD wastewater discharge permit appeal. And we wanted to have this available to you. It came to us too late to make it an agenda item, but we wanted to make you aware of this. It's basically a request that we provide some, a letter of support for the district, and we would be interested in any discussion or thoughts you had about this. And Oscar is well-versed in this issue and brought it to our attention.
There, Vegas?
The request just went out to all jurisdictions last week. And as the city manager indicated, we didn't have time to staff it, so he's bringing it up under his report. I think we need to support it, and I don't know how helpful it'll be, but I think it's sort of the next step in support of our attempt to try and get recognition for what the district is trying to do relative to its, you know, being a good steward of our watersheds. And so, I think it makes sense, and all jurisdictions are going to be asked to submit a letter of support.
Well, there's a lot of issues that theoretically surface with that particular report. And so, is it in the best interest of West Sacramento, from a water quality perspective, from a water distribution perspective, that we support regional sand?
Well, I mean, yeah, I'm trying to look at what the ups and the downs would be. I mean, I think there are more ups to a, taking a support position, as I think most jurisdictions will probably end up doing.
Well, I don't, I just want to make sure that we don't lose any of our water rights because we have river water rights. And I really, I am concerned with some of the proposals that I see for water distribution to Southern California. And yet, at the same time, those interests don't want regional sand water going through that, going down the pipeline or getting into whatever it is, even though we've spent billions of dollars in order to make sure that that's the kind of water that can actually be released. And I just want, I don't want to get caught up in, in the, I don't want to get caught up in the water wars that, quite frankly, I think will take place. You know, they always seem to. You know, the governor's got a proposal, he wants to build a canal or he wants to build a tunnel. And at the same time, regional sand just wants to, you know, distribute the water into the delta or into the Sacramento River and therefore into the delta. And yet, at the same time, some of the water purveyors, they don't want that water.
Right.
So, I mean, I don't want to get caught up in a bailiwick, but I mean, if you think that that's the right approach, well, then, I really don't have any problem because I can't see it affecting our water rights because we get our water rights from northern water. It has to come north of our city on down before we can, before we start taking water out of it.
Okay, yeah, but I'm fine with that. To me, if we sign it, it will, it will, I mean, it's helpful, but it would make a much larger statement if we didn't sign it. I mean, if all the jurisdictions in regional sanitation fix their names to a letter and we're just one of many, it's not as though anyone, you know, it's not like California's going to notice or think anything of that if we choose not to, given the potential, I mean, if this all falls apart, if this appeal does not proceed, you know, or does not succeed in any way, the rate increases and the connection hookup increases for our residents and businesses will put us at such a huge economic disadvantage with Southern California and the Bay Area and others that that, to me, that threat is so huge that we need to, you know, we need to put, we need to help to the extent that we can to, even though it's unlikely to succeed, we need to do the best we can to try to avoid that happening.
Yeah, and I think based on some of the feedback that staff has provided, I mean, I think the potential for at least have the opportunity to argue some of the scientific principles that have been addressed. And in the court's recent remanding, some of the issues to be addressed by this, let's see, from the state to the regional board, I wouldn't say, it was encouraging to see at least that that conversation has to occur again. So, the potential to have that conversation still exists. So, I think there's value in supporting the collective regional, you know, the jurisdiction, the member jurisdictions within the regional district. They still have an opportunity to voice their concerns about some of the science that's been used. So, I think it makes sense, but I think we're, it's going to affect our residents one way or another, and I think we need to continue to fight the fight.
I think, though, that, quite frankly, I don't think it's any, has anything to do with the quality of water or anything else. It's just, it's water.
Yeah.
It's all it is.
So, it's not an agenda item? So, my expectation is that an authorization will be forthcoming unless somebody here requests that it be agendized for a future meeting to not do that. So, and no such...
We'll let Oscar sell it, I mean, sign it. He has to sign it, though. I want him signing that water, I mean, sewer rate increase.
Okay. Anything else on the city manager report?
Yeah, I think, I understand you, I think it is actually on the agenda in the sense that it was not a separate agenda item, but it's listed by title under the...
Yes, I didn't recognize that it is actually, under the city manager's report, it is on the agenda, so...
All right. Do you want to move?
It's not specifically identified for action, but I think a discussion is fine.
And I interpret the discussion the way you interpreted it.
Great. All right. No. It's not. All right, and the, and just, on a completely separate manner, the city manager is, the city manager's office is reviewing the various delegations and expenditure authorities that have been made over the last decade or whatever for a reset, and that'll be coming back to the council at a future meeting as well. All right, city attorney report?
Staff direction for members of the council? And we have no future agenda item requests. Is there motion to adjourn? Then move by Mayor Protan Biegas and second by Mr. Ledesma. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, or any no? Motion carries, meeting is adjourned.